Not deny. Let's get this thing over.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Night to celebrate. Welcome to our December 20, 2022, City Council meeting. Time is 7:02. Meeting is now in session. We're going to start with a pledge of allegiance, invocation and pledge of allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Martinez from Amazing Love Ministries. After that, West Covina Police Explorer Post 499 will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And after that, Ms. Bianca Cambaros from West Covina High School will sing the National Anthem. All rise, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we thank you. This evening, as we gather to discuss the affairs of our city, we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy in our nation. Since Scripture stays to trust in you with all our hearts and lean out unto our own understanding, we pray for wisdom for our city council, Father, especially our incoming council member. And Councilwoman Rosario, she takes the position of mayor. Since Scripture also exhorts us to pray for all authority, grant wisdom to all that serve our city, Father, our city manager, our police and fire chiefs. And we pray, Heavenly Father, in this Christmas time for the hurting in our city that may have suffered the loss of a loved one or loss in health, employment, or suffered in some other way, you are the restorer of our souls, as King David said in the Old Testament. We pray for our schools to be safe havens and that you protect all our children in schools. As we shortly enter the new year, we remember the words of the psalmist of all, who said that you crown our year with your goodness. Crown, West Covina, with your goodness, Father. May all our businesses prosper. Protect every police officer, first responder, every resident, every home. And I bless West Covina and every home and every family in our city. The Lord bless you and keep you, West Covina. The Lord make his face shine upon you. Be gracious to you. May the Lord lift up his contentness upon you and grant you his shalom peace. God bless America and God bless our beloved city, West Covina. Amen.
Amen.
Now, for the pledge, we've got our Police Explorer Post number 499. Here they come.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Testing.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Or the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? Or the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. Beautiful. Please be seated. Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmember Tabatabai.
Present.
Councilwoman Wu.
Yep.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Protem Diaz.
Here.
Mayor Castellanos.
Here.
Thank you. Today, we did not have a closed session. It was canceled, so there's nothing to report. We also have no presentations this evening, but we do have an adjournment. I received a request for an adjournment. So if you'd let me read that into the record. It's regarding Charles H. Spicer. He was born on June 12, 1927, in Lululemon, Kentucky. He passed away on November 2, 2022, in West Covina. Chuck, as he was known to his friends, moved with his family to West Covina in 1962. Chuck served in the Navy at the end of World War II. He was five days short of a year, so he was given the opportunity to finish his military obligation by serving one year in the Navy without a guarantee his wife could join him or four years in the Air Force. He chose the four years in the Air Force. He had training in Washington, D.C., and Vienna, Austria, for service in the Office of Special Investigations. He was sent to London for three years, where he tested American security during the Cold War. After completing his military obligation, Chuck became a teacher. He taught history and government and in the evenings, citizenship. He taught two years at Covina High School and then at South Hills High School. During retirement, Chuck was very active in our community, most notably volunteering countless hours with the Friends of the Library. Chuck touched many lives during his career of public service. He leaves behind his wife, Adria, and sons, Michael and Mark, and their families, and many friends. He will be missed. Now, moving on to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out a yellow speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. And Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
I have three speaker cards this evening, Mayor.
Three?
Three.
Okay. Then let's proceed, please.
Our first speaker is Lloyd Johnson, followed by Steve Bennett. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, councils. Good to see everybody here tonight. You know, it reminds me of many, many years ago when I first stood up here, I couldn't even talk at this mic. The mayor that was sitting right at the time was Steve Herford. He came down and gave me a glass of water, and I'll never forget that, Steve. No, but I've got better since then. So first of all, I'd like to do some congratulations. That's the main reason why I'm here. First of all, to our Mayor, Dario Castellanos. Thank you so very much for your leadership as our mayor this past year and for the past four years as a council member. You've done a lot of good, and we want to thank you too much. And I wish you on all your endeavors. Councilmember Tony Wu. Just becoming a old habit. Congratulations, my friend, on another four years of reelection. Wish you all the best in the world, too. And this special lady over here, Councilwoman Letty Lopez Viado. See, I finally got your last name right after all these years. Congratulations on getting reelected again. And I do have to say, congratulations to our elected West Covina City Treasurer, Colleen Lozati, on her reelection. And to our elected City Clerk, Nick Lewis, for his reelection. Congratulations to you guys. And then I also like to say to our... Congratulations to our new council-elect, Oli Cantos, on your election to our city council. I wish you all the best and good luck. And to our incoming mayor, Rosario Diaz. I wish you all the luck in the world. I know you're going to do great things for the city, and I wish you all the best. And after that, I just want to say thank you to you all and Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Steve Bennett, followed by Ethan Bowles. Sorry if I mispronounced that.
Evening, council. Council Reorganize is always a special night, right? We get to move people around in the seats up here. We get to swear in some people, either new or old, back into their office. So congrats are obviously first thing on the order. Congratulations to Letty and Tony for reelection. Congratulations to the incoming mayor and to... I congratulate you, but you're still there for two more years, so congratulations. Congratulations to Dario. We don't always agree politically. Probably more often, we didn't agree, which is okay. That's part of the way politics works. That's part of the way this relationship and this role is. But I always respect someone who knows when it's time to hang it up, if you want to call it that, and say, "I'm ready to move on to something else." So I give you a lot of respect for knowing when that was. I wish you the best. I know you have a new child, so I wish you the best. There's nothing that's more fun than watching the growth of a child. Many of you are parents up here. There's nothing more fun than that. And I loved the, probably the little league years the most. That was my special thing. But whatever you end up with, whatever that child's specialty is or joy, I hope you spend a lot of time with them. Tonight, you know, we have a new council member swearing in, and I want to congratulate him as well, Oli Cantos. He's kind of a ray of sunshine on a rainy day coming into this council. And I believe that we're going to see great things out of him. And I think that with the new dynamic on this council, it should be a very interesting next couple of years. So I'm going to leave that with you guys. I wish you all Merry Christmas. Enjoy, I believe, your first Christmas with your child?
Second.
Second Christmas. Well, I wish you the best. It's a little older than I thought. I didn't realize it was that old. But I wish you guys the best. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And I'm sure I'll see you guys around. And good job.
Ethan Bowles.
Hello, council. My name is Ethan Boulay. I come from Troop 888 in West Covina. And I like to talk about an intersection on Citrus and South Garvey, in the southeast corner, northbound on Citrus. There is a right turn only sign on the far-right lane that I feel like does more harm than good. I believe these signs were put in place during construction on the freeway and then haven't been removed since. And so it really disrupts the flow of traffic. It is also commonly ignored, which puts other drivers at risk that do follow it, considering that when going straight in the proper lane, if you want to move on to the freeway going west, then you have to cross over four separate lanes in order to get on the freeway. So I provided some pictures and examples, if you'd like to see them.
You can hand them right here.
Thank you.
There is also a sign for the crosswalk being closed that has not been removed since construction. And I feel like a lot of these things need to be removed as well as the painting on the arrows to instruct you where to go need to be repainted. The bus, the bus stop, most of the buses at the bus stop, which is in the lane that can only turn right, since there is often, they can't turn into the left lane to go straight. They often ignore it as well and go straight on the right turn-only lane. And so I feel like the lane should just be changed. It'd benefit everybody, and I can't think of any examples that could do more harm. So thank you very much, everybody. Hope you take into consideration.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. You know, just so you know, you brought up a few things that I don't know are being looked at, but the first issue about the right turn lane is something that's being actively reviewed. But thank you for coming here to speak on it. It's really helpful when people do that.
We always request that city traffic to look into it.
But this is a wonderful reminder, and we'll put this into the record, and we appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Have a happy holidays.
Thank you.
Phil Robinson.
Good evening. Happy holidays and New Years, everyone. Tonight's headline is that the FDA has finally admitted that the clot shot is really a clot shot. I mean, it's been obvious for years, but strokes hard attacks. We've endured two years of martial law. Our constitutions, both state and federal, need to be restored. Our God-given rights need to be respected. The city manager reports that emergency calls are up 40%. Something is obviously going on in the city and nationwide. We need to stop believing the propaganda narrative and provide some passive and peaceful resistance to the government's and pharmaceutical industry's agenda. I'll summarize some subjects I've mentioned this year. Even physicians don't know the details of what's in the clot shot. It's in the patent file and it's proprietary information. And medical tyranny is getting in the way of the doctor-patient relationship. Unfortunately, physicians are just blindly following the official dictum from the FDA, the official narrative, even though they know in their hearts that, most of them, this isn't right. But there's a bill, AB 2098. That bill is about ready to become law, but it's being challenged. As I speak, the State Attorney General's Board, the General's Office, and the State Medical Board are being sued. You know, physicians have First Amendment rights just like everybody else. Anyway, AB 2098 is the reason why we're enduring this situation. But there's something else. I mean, physicians are to blame, too, because they're trained like monkeys in medical school to be shills for the pharmaceutical industry. You know, that's the way they train. So that's what they do. And the media and the ad revenue is pretty much owned by the pharmaceutical industry. So that's why the truth that comes out is, let's put it, let's say it's a little bit skewed. So the jab is really experimental gene therapy. And some people just don't think that their DNA needs to be edited. You know, they're satisfied with their body the way it is. Anyway, common sense suffices. You don't need to have a medical degree to figure it out that the jab is neither safe nor effective. The jab does nothing to help your health, and most medical professionals know this. So the gene therapies are just straight-up poison, according to Dr. Ben Marble, who has treated 15,000 patients from his MyFreeDoctor website. Gain-of-function research is just bioweapons research. It triggers turbo cancer, which is surging. I mean, cancer pops up and it runs its course with great speed. Reliable internet sources consist of Karen Kingston Substack. She's a former Pfizer employee, together with Dr. David Martin of Virginia and Reiner Fulmich, a California and German licensed lawyer. They've figured this out. I mean, there's a mountain of evidence that already exists. It just needs to be presented to the judicial system, but the judicial process is slow.
You, Bill? Do we have any more speakers?
No further speakers, Mayor.
Thank you. And City Manager, would you please respond to public comments?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. I'll try and just provide brief responses. We always appreciate it when people come out to these meetings and seek redress of their grievances and share their opinions. Ethan, thank you for being here tonight about that intersection. We've got the traffic engineer looking at it. I agree with you in terms of some changes need to be made to straighten that out. And more importantly, so does our traffic engineer. She's going to report back to our traffic committee, and I think you'll see some changes in that intersection pretty quickly. Mr. Robinson, AB 2098 is not one of the bills we are following, but I'll look it up and, if appropriate, send in a letter on the city's behalf. Do monitor legislation when the council requests me to do so. And that's all I've got this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And aside from responding to that, you have a few words to say.
Thank you, Mayor. We normally do a city manager's report, but given the importance of this evening, we're not going to do one tonight, excepting I would like to say to everyone here, I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and a happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year.
Thank you. Dave?
Excuse me through the chair, Mayor. We have one speaker card. It was submitted late. It's up to you if you'd like me to call him to speak.
Sure, let's go ahead.
Victor?
Yes. Hello. Representative Mr. John Shoemaker. He has a message for you guys. Do the decent thing. Resign. Ginger Elliot, Rosario Elliot, Rosario Diaz, or whatever name you are known, you should not accept the position of mayor and should immediately resign from office. The reasons are simple and clear. You've clearly stated you were elected to represent District 3. And if you do not live in District 3, do not contact me. Now you must, as mayor, represent the entire city. You're married to William Wild Bill Elliot, a person who has called for the council to recruit more white families to the city. He has said it was in the name of diversity. Well, West Covina does not have the national average of African-American families, but does not call for the city to recruit more black families in the name of diversity. The same person who has called for a renter's license to track renters, who more likely than not may be of a certain economic and ethnic background. A person who has called immigrants dreamers cockroaches. The same person who blames the licensing of immigrants for the loss of your family business. You yourself have called districts racist. As to your own heritage, you say you're a Hispanic woman and played it up during your campaign to the extent you never mentioned your husband, William Wild Bill Elliot, who is not Hispanic, while claiming to understand the Hispanic community and how you will represent that community, but has stated you do not think like them. I take it you think like your husband? You have sat at your council seat and laughed when I complained about the comments made by your husband and the response from a candidate about the comments about my dead wife. You have remained silent when your husband said people of Jewish heritage wished they were white. You sat silent when your husband stated people of different ethnic backgrounds wished they were white. Your husband, without comment from you, has attacked fellow council members who have a different political view from you and your husband. Your husband has attended meetings on your behalf as your representative and enforcer. So how do people who are not white, or anyone for that matter, come to you for assistance with problems when your husband has clearly stated his positions on issues related to political philosophy, economic status, color, ethnic background, ancestry, or immigration status, and you have remained silent? The members of this council and the next council, prior to making any rotation, must discuss the comments made by the mayor pro tem regarding not thinking like them and her obvious support of William Wild Bill Elliot's comments. Silence by the mayor pro tem is agreement. Silence by other members of the councils means they also agree. Please save the city the embarrassment, pain, and expense of the steps that will be taken to address this situation. Resign.
And for the record, I'm one of the people who your husband says, "I wish I were white." Last I checked, I am white. The last white person who hated other white people as much as your husband does, his name was Adolf Hitler.
Okay, we'll close the... Oh, we've got one more. Okay.
Ms. Rose Lopez. Good evening. I want to congratulate all of the newly-elected officials, especially you representing my district. My name's Rose Lopez. I have been a resident of West Covina my whole life. I won't give my age up, but my whole life. All my education, my children's education, I met my husband at one of our West Covina schools. I just really want to congratulate all of you, and I really want to commend you for the hard work. I know we sit here as elected officials, and we take a lot of punches. And you still greet it and you accept it. I understand that completely, and it's a hard place to be sometimes. But just notice, you have many, many votes that put you in those seats. And that's the majority. And we support what you do. We appreciate what you do. And we know this is a labor of love, because I know this cannot sustain your families. Sorry, I'm getting a little emotional because I was in that seat not too long ago. I understand what that's like. I want to commend you and thank you for your service, Mayor, because you did take some punches, too. But just note, the votes speak for themselves. The people of West Covina really appreciate all the hard work and dedication that goes behind this. Really, it doesn't go without notice. Let me just say, we appreciate you guys. So I wanted to end that note and just let you know, the people speak, the votes are out there, and you are truly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
I just wanted to say thank you and also congratulations to Rose Lopez for the school boards. So thank you for coming up and speaking, but thank you.
Thank you. All right. So moving on with our agenda this evening. We're going to the consent calendar next. We've got six items on the consent calendar, right?
Yes, we have six items on the consent calendar.
Now, would anyone like to pull any of the six items? Good. We've got a motion to approve all six and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Tabatabai.
Aye.
Councilman Wu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz.
Aye.
Mayor Castellanos.
Aye.
Items pass 5-0, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And at this time, I'll turn the floor over to Mayor Protem Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you like to say any words?
Maybe we should say first.
I'll wait until...
Okay. Councilman Tony Wu, would you like to say anything?
You sure you want me to have a floor?
Wow.
I'm going to talk...
We're limited on time.
Okay. So only like five minutes? Okay. No worry, okay? I just want to say something quickly, okay? Really, really appreciate Mayor Dario Castellano for this four years' contribution, okay? And I have to say, I'm very proud, okay, to have you to stick with us, okay, with your hard work and dedication, okay? A lot of people don't know, okay, you helping so much. The first thing, these four years, with your finance background, you helped us to fix the finance. Currently, our surplus and currently from $8, $9 million four years ago, now we are $25 million strong. So meaning, we're running a very, very good budget, okay? We have, okay, earned the reserve to $25 million. It's all about you, because you have a finance background. A second thing, okay, a second thing is about public safety. Last year, you asked for, okay, Last year, you asked for, okay, hire 10 additional police officers, when last year, everybody wanted to defund the police, and you say, "No, we need more police," and we approved additional 10 police officers, because you can see that the city need that, and that is why you, okay, helping us. At the same time, with your background, okay, as a medical, and you understand how to protect our city with not only the public safety plus the public health, and with that, and we pushing to help, maybe we can get more resource to direct to our residents, and that public health will help our future. I want to thank you for pushing that very difficult decision. And altogether, your dream is, you don't want to see the, I know it, the empty buses running around. You hate that so much, okay? And you want to cast a stone, because you don't want to see the empty buses, and you request to have Uber, Diarrhea, okay, all that together, and a new route, okay? So no empty buses, hopefully, hopefully, future, okay, with our help, okay? So you can see, you've done a lot of stuff for these four years. So too bad you don't want to run. I know it's so difficult, but I understand, because you have a young kid, and you have to change the diaper, okay? And that's, I done that 30 years ago, okay? So, and he's sitting right there, and I, not too long ago, okay? But blink of your eye, 30 years. So I understand you want to keep more time with your family, and I want to thank you for your service, and I want to, okay, share with you, you're a proud father, and one day, your kid grow up, they will appreciate what you have to contribute to our city. Thank you so much, Mayor Dario Castellanos.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rosario Diaz. I would just first like to say, as a resident, Mayor Dario Castellanos, when you were a council member, you were actually one of the first council members that I ever interacted with. You actually spoke to my issue. I know I was having some issues when it came to booking images, and I know that you were instrumental in getting the chief to look at that issue. And, you know, I really felt heard, and, you know, I really appreciated that as a resident. As a council member, I've appreciated you as mayor, being able to talk to you about things like, you know, Athens and transportation. I think that's something that you and I both can really have a lot of agreement on, and I really appreciated just the way you've run the meetings, you've kept us on the agenda, you've allowed us all to speak, you've given us time. You know, I know, you know, Councilman Wu and I tend to speak a lot, ask a lot of questions, but you did give us the ability to be heard and ask those questions, you know, and I've really appreciated that. I've appreciated just, you know, my first actual council meeting, you know, being in closed session, just you shared some things with me. There was some vocabulary that I wasn't familiar with, and you just lent your knowledge to me as a newcomer, and that was, you know, you come here on the dais, you don't, no one tells you what to do, but you did that for me, and I'm very much appreciated. You are going to be missed, and hopefully, if you're a private citizen, you know, we can continue with our relationship. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor Castellanos, I wanted to thank you for everything you've done. I know we both were commissioners prior to being elected for the first time in 2018, so it was an interesting journey, even here when, sitting in that throne, I guess, when you get attacked in multiple things, but you took it like a champ, so it was very cool. And I just wanted to congratulate you, and now you get to spend those extra precious time with your family. Hopefully, there's more children that comes into the city of West Covina, and you utilize all the things that we have to offer, and our door is always open, and I just want to say thank you again for all that you do. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Dario, I want to thank you for your leadership and your guidance that you've guided me doing during being your mayor pro tem. I know that you've been in the city all your life, and I know you love it, and I know that everything you do for, or what you did during the city council years, you did it because you love your city, and I really admire that, and I appreciate and I value our friendship, and I just, I want to wish you well in your new endeavors. I know you're a very busy man, and you're going to be even busier with the baby, and I just want to wish you a lot of luck, and thank you, thank you so much for helping me out.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So now, okay, I'd like to hear some comments from Mr. Castellanos, if you'd like to say.
Well, I'd like to thank you all for, you know, the council here, serving with me through the tough times that we had in the past. Brian and Rosario, you guys came on in the middle of my term, but it's been a wonderful experience. I'd also like to thank our city manager, city attorney, assistant city managers, Lisa, all of our staff, really, our PD, our fire, everyone who I've interacted with, the residents, everybody here for coming. I really appreciate you guys. This is our elected officials who are here, Nick Lewis, former mayor Steve Hertford, Lloyd Johnson, other elected officials from the school board, everyone who's here. We've got, we've got a ton of people, too many to name, but I appreciate everybody here, and it's been a wonderful experience. We've done, we've done some good. We endured some rocky waters. Not everyone always agreed with us, but this process keeps moving forward, and I look forward to seeing Ali Cantos up here with this council, and I think, I know, things are going to continue to go well, so I really appreciate this experience, and again, thank everybody in this room and here at City Hall for supporting us. Thank you.
So at this...
And my family for being here. And supporting me. Too many, too many thank yous, so thank you all. Well, yeah, my father is here, Dr. Castellanos. And my sister, who's almost a physician herself, so thank you guys. Okay, now I'll turn the meeting back over.
So at this time, I'd like to ask the Mayor Castellanos to join me at the podium for a presentation.
All right.
And the microphone, please. Microphone? Well, the audience watching can't.
Thank you. Okay, Mario, I mean, why do I keep calling you Mario? Mayor Dario Castellanos. The West Covina City Council expresses its grateful appreciation for your leadership as mayor of the city of West Covina, November 2021 through December 2022, and all of the council members' names are on there. So I want to present this to you.
Thank you very much.
And again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have a few certificates.
Certificate of Congressional Recognition presented to Dario Castellanos from Grace Napolitano's office. U.S. Congresswoman, honoring your many accomplishments and, I don't have my glasses. This is horrible. An invaluable service to our community during your tenure as mayor of the city of West Covina. Your selfless guidance and expertise are greatly appreciated. Grace Napolitano.
All right, straight from Congress. Thank you.
Senator Rubio? Good evening, everyone. Of course, I don't want to take too much time. I know everyone has a lot to do tonight, but I wanted to take this time to come and say hello and also congratulate everyone. I know the program is short today, but I wanted to recognize your work. I know it's very difficult when you're on the dais, and, you know, you sacrifice so much personal time. I know a lot of folks don't know, all the Saturday nights, Sundays, every single day there's something to do, and you do it with a lot of passion and, you know, courage to be out in the community, even though sometimes it's not easy. So I wanted to also congratulate you. And on behalf of the California State Senate, it is my privilege to present you with a certificate of recognition and dedication to the city of West Covina. And I think one of the gentlemen said it, you know, you knew it was time to go, and I also appreciate that when someone knows that their priorities is somewhere else, it's good to let someone else lead, and so we commend you for that, and thank you so much for your friendship. And we're always going to be around to support you, so whatever we can do, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have another certificate from the state California Senate. Certificate of recognition presented to Dario Castellanos in recognition of exemplary service from Josh Newman's office.
Thank you.
Wendy is here from Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio's office. Wendy?
Hi. Is it okay? Yes, thank you. Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Wendy Saavedra, and I'm a district representative with the Office of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio. It's an honor to be here today and recognize outgoing Mayor Castellanos. Thank you, Mayor Castellanos, for your leadership and for your continued support to our communities here in the city of West Covina. And with that, I do have a certificate to present.
Thank you very much.
Of course. And this one is for the mayor.
I'll hold it.
On the count of three, one, two, three. One more time. One, two, three. Thank you.
Ms. Valerie Munoz. Valerie? Linda? Okay, here we go.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, thank you. I am Valerie Munoz, mayor pro tem for the city of La Buente, neighboring city, but also the representative on the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority, representing cities with non-pumping rights here in the city of West Covina. First and foremost, I want to thank you for all of your dedicated and your hard work, not only in the medical field. I know your father's also an M.D., but also for the city of West Covina. Congratulations on your children, and I know family comes first, so it's great that you recognize that, and you're going to be stepping away. I know it's going to be a disservice for the city of West Covina, because they are going to be missing a great public servant. So congratulations on everything, and congratulations to coming mayor. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mayor in the middle. No, no, it's the mayor in the middle.
Ms. Linda Santos?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Linda Santos, and I am the president of the Filipino-American Association of West Covina, and we are here to present some certificates. So, and also, we have the other members of our board here attending. So anyway, but first of all, I wanted to say that thank you, Mayor Dario, for your service to our community, and so we look forward for you to be back. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Photo?
Just have a picture.
I want to ask you a little bit, please. One, two, three, one more. One, two, three.
Thank you. Finally got my street sign.
Yay, I love it. It's beautiful. Well, I just want to wish you well, and I really am sad to see you go, but you need to do what you need to do. So thank you for everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. One, two, three, and one more. One, and three.
Why do I do my pen? Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Nick Lewis?
I have to say it. All right, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nicholas Lewis.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will...
And that I will...
Well and faithfully...
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Woo! On the three. One, two, three.
Thank, thank you.
Photo?
Just have a picture.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank, thank you. Photo?
Just have a picture.
Okay.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank, thank you. Photo?
Just have a picture.
Okay.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you.
I wonder where you are.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Finally got my street sign.
Yay, I love it. It's beautiful. Well, I just want to wish you well and I really am sad to see you go, but you need to do what you need to do. So, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, two, three. And one more. One, and three.
Thank you. Hey. What did I do to my pen? Okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay, at this time, we will be administer the OSO office to our newly elected officials. Nick Lewis?
All right, repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Nicholas Lewis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. This is our assistant city clerk. And that is Nicholas Lewis. Congratulations. Thank you.
I, I think you have the highest vote, right? Kind of not fair.
Okay, we have another city treasurer, Rosati Zoldub office. Is she coming up? Colleen Rosati as treasurer?
I know Colleen is here. We'll welcome her to come forward right now.
We have a certificate for city clerk Nick Lewis.
I'm sorry, I need to take this moment. I know they said the program was short, but I was elected once, so I know how special this day is for all of the elected. So I'm sorry, but I'm going to take a little bit of your time. Public service is not easy and Nicholas, maybe you don't know, my first job was the elected city clerk for the city of Baldwin Park. So, so I do know the work that you have ahead of you. And I want to take a moment to say thank you. Thank you for wanting to serve. And I also want to commend you on behalf of the California State Senate for wanting to, to really give back to your community. And this is a special moment, so I want to take the time to personally say thank you. And I look forward to your success and I'm here to support you in any way I can. And I have four years of experience, so hopefully I could serve as a guidance. And so congratulations to your family and to you. And there you go. Big round of applause, please. Congratulations.
Come on ahead, Colleen.
So once again, thank you for this opportunity. And I'm here to swear in, of course, Colleen Rosati. Please repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Colleen Rosati.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Big round of applause for our new city treasurer. And I also have a certificate of recognition from the state. Thank you for your service. We really appreciate it.
One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, and three.
I would just like to say something really quickly. Thank you. First off, I'd like to thank my family and my friends, Team Rosati. This is my third term. I appreciate all, I appreciate, appreciate all of the voters that came out this time. Sincerely, I will not let you down. I am humbled and honored to remain your elected city treasurer and I will do my best to fulfill this position to the best of my capability. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to all my family and friends that came out here tonight and for all of you. We appreciate you being here. Thank you so much. Congratulations. If I could have, if I can have Councilwoman Lopez Biado come to the front, please.
If I can get you to change places so that you can be heard. I, repeat, state your name.
I, Lopez Biado.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I.
And that I.
Will.
Will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which.
Upon which.
I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter. Congratulations. I'm not as tall as everyone else. I also want to take the time to recognize my friend. I had the privilege of getting to know you four years ago when we were both running. And the one thing that I can assure all of your constituents is that you are everywhere, every event that I go to, whether it's at night and the morning weekends. She's always there representing her community. So I also want to thank you for your time and opportunity to work with you on so many issues. So once again, on behalf of the state of California, I want to congratulate you. Thank you. Thank you.
Please, count to three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, and three.
Sorry. I'm not as tall as everyone else. I also want to take the time to recognize my friend. I had the privilege of getting to know you four years ago when we were both running. And the one thing that I can assure all of your constituents is that you are everywhere, every event that I go to, whether it's at night and the morning weekends. She's always there representing her community. So I also want to thank you for your time and opportunity to work with you on so many issues. So once again, on behalf of the state of California, I want to congratulate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, count to three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, and three. Thank you.
If we could have Bishop Gordon, please come to the front. If we could have Bishop Gordon, please come to the front.
I'm Ole Kantos as bishop, and they asked me to do a short prayer before his, his part of this. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to meet together, meet this evening in this city council chamber and to see the reorganization of this city resulting from the free election that just occurred. And we thank you for all these people that are serving and working so hard to help make this a great city. And thank you for the opportunity that my friend Ole has to serve on the city council. And please bless all these people that are working so hard in this city to be able to help make this continue to be a great city and a better city. And bless Ole as he learns the, his responsibilities and obligations as he serves on the city council, to be able to do that and to be able to work well with the other people in the city and on the council. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. If we could have Mr. David Herbst come up and Ole, or council member, I'd like to Ole Kantos, please come up.
Madam Mayor, may I just say a few words before I swear?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council and guests. My name is David Herbst. I am a member of the Board of Regents of Loyola Marymont University. I am here tonight as a 30-year-plus friend of Ole Kantos. Ole and I were in student government together at LMU. Ole, I bring you the greetings and best wishes of your alma mater, LMU. We are extraordinarily proud of you. I can tell you all, Mayor and council, that you are getting one of the very best human beings I have ever known in my entire life. And I also bring tonight, if I may, the greetings of former House Majority Whip Tony Quello, a fellow LMU alum. As many of you may know, Tony is the primary author of the Americans with Disabilities Act, a piece of legislation that I like to point out that President George Herbert Walker Bush, a fellow Republican, said it was the best thing he ever signed. I spoke with Congressman Quello earlier today, and he not only asked me, Ole, to congratulate you, but he also asked me to thank the voters of West Covina for their willingness to accept that people with a disability have the capacity and ability to get the job done, just like everyone else. And I can attest, for knowing you for over 30 years, you always get the job done, done well. So now, let's swear you in, my friend, so you can get the job of council member underway and become, as Tony and I understand it, only the second elected official in America who is blind. Please raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Olegario Dagdagan Kantos VII.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties on which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, councilman.
Hi, once again, Senator Susan Rubio.
How does it feel?
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Ogden. Once again, I'm here with, you know, such pride and honor. I think that West Covina is breaking so many barriers. And I was a teacher for 17 years, elementary school. And I used to always tell my students that anything is possible. And I think what we're seeing here is that you are now someone that all of our children can look up to. So I want to say congratulations. Thank you for taking the initiative to want to serve this community. I'm honored to be in your presence. Thank you for serving here. And I had the privilege of meeting him so earlier in the year, I think it was Veterans Day. And, and he's such a lovely individual, and I think you make us proud. Thank you, sir. But I have a certificate. I have a job to do, I forgot. And this is on behalf of the state of California. We want to say thank you. Thank you for wanting to serve. Thank you. And we applaud your commitment to our community. And we look forward to your success in the region, second, and the entire country. That is pretty spectacular. So we all have something to look up to, and we appreciate your service here. Thank you.
In this direction, please, count to three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, and three. Please. 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 One, two, and three.
If we could have Bishop Gordon, please come to the front. If we could have Bishop Gordon, please come to the front.
I'm Ole Kantos as bishop, and they asked me to do a short prayer before his, his part of this. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to meet together, meet this evening in this city council chamber and to see the reorganization of this city resulting from the free election that just occurred. And we thank you for all these people that are serving and working so hard to help make this a great city. And thank you for the opportunity that my friend Ole has to serve on the city council. And please bless all these people that are working so hard in this city to be able to help make this continue to be a great city and a better city. And bless Ole as he learns the, his responsibilities and obligations as he serves on the city council, to be able to do that and to be able to work well with the other people in the city and on the council. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. If we could have Mr. David Herbst come up and Ole, or council member, I'd like to Ole Kantos, please come up.
Madam Mayor, may I just say a few words before I swear?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council and guests. My name is David Herbst. I am a member of the Board of Regents of Loyola Marymont University. I am here tonight as a 30-year-plus friend of Ole Kantos. Ole and I were in student government together at LMU. Ole, I bring you the greetings and best wishes of your alma mater, LMU. We are extraordinarily proud of you. I can tell you all, Mayor and council, that you are getting one of the very best human beings I have ever known in my entire life. And I also bring tonight, if I may, the greetings of former House Majority Whip Tony Quello, a fellow LMU alum. As many of you may know, Tony is the primary author of the Americans with Disabilities Act, a piece of legislation that I like to point out that President George Herbert Walker Bush, a fellow Republican, said it was the best thing he ever signed. I spoke with Congressman Quello earlier today, and he not only asked me, Ole, to congratulate you, but he also asked me to thank the voters of West Covina for their willingness to accept that people with a disability have the capacity and ability to get the job done, just like everyone else. And I can attest, for knowing you for over 30 years, you always get the job done, done well. So now, let's swear you in, my friend, so you can get the job of council member underway and become, as Tony and I understand it, only the second elected official in America who is blind. Please raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Olegario Dagdagan Kantos VII.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties on which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, councilman.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Ogden. Once again, I'm here with, you know, such pride and honor. I think that West Covina is breaking so many barriers. And I was a teacher for 17 years, elementary school. And I used to always tell my students that anything is possible. And I think what we're seeing here is that you are now someone that all of our children can look up to. So I want to say congratulations. Thank you for taking the initiative to want to serve this community. I'm honored to be in your presence. Thank you for serving here. And I had the privilege of meeting him so earlier in the year, I think it was Veterans Day. And, and he's such a lovely individual, and I think you make us proud. Thank you, sir. But I have a certificate. I have a job to do, I forgot. And this is on behalf of the state of California. We want to say thank you. Thank you for wanting to serve. Thank you. And we applaud your commitment to our community. And we look forward to your success in the region, second, and the entire country. That is pretty spectacular. So we all have something to look up to, and we appreciate your service here. Thank you.
In this direction, please, count to three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, and three. Please. 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 Filipino community, we are so, we feel blessed that, uh, we are here and, uh, together with them, we will be serving the community and make West Covina even a greater city that we can be proud of. So, uh, in behalf of the Philam, uh, Association of West Covina, and some of our, uh, members of the board are here, Oli, they, I, congratulations, and, uh, we look forward to be serving together with you, with our community. Thank you.
All my children, come up. I changed your diaper before. Don't be shy. Come up. This is all my kid. You can see I'm very productive.
I.
State your name.
Tony Wu.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
The State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemy.
Foreign.
Foreign or domestic.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
The State of California.
That I take.
That I take.
This obligation.
This obligation.
Freely.
Freely.
Without any.
Without any mental.
Reservation.
Mental reservation.
Or purpose.
Or purpose.
Of evasion.
Of evasion.
And that I.
And that I.
Will.
Well.
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 And faithfully.
Faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duty.
Upon which.
Upon which.
I am about to enter.
About I'm to enter.
you know, Councilmember Tony, well, you bring so much energy to this council, and I think we can all agree that it's always an interesting meeting because he loves to, to chit-chat, and he, um, will tell you himself, but I've known you for quite a long time, and, and once again, I know that there's a lot of personal commitment that you put of your time, and it's another elected official that I see every single time I come to West Covina to their events, and you're always very present, and, and I think that's important to recognize that personal family sacrifice. Instead of being out with your family, eating dinner, you're out taking care of, uh, city business. So once again, that is something to be commended. So I wanted to say thank you for your service, and thank you for wanting to serve once again. And on behalf of the California State Senate, it is also my privilege to present you with the certificate and recognition of your time here. Congratulations. Thank you.
I thought we only have two Filipinos in the city of West, or the city council, but we have an adopted member. Adopted son. Because, uh, you know, Tony has been in all our events, so the Filipinos thought that, is he Filipino? But anyway, thank you, Tony, for being there with us, so, um...
In behalf, uh, my name is Hera Ramos. In behalf of the Filipino-American Association of West Covina and the businesses of West Covina, I would like to present this certificate of appreciation in grateful recognition of your continuing service and support. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to welcome our new city council and, um, and find out if they'd like to say a few words. Councilman Kanto's.
those who are watching online and who are with us in spirit. Good evening. It is not often that firsts occur in one's life. This is the first time for me to serve in elected office, and when thinking about all that there is to come, we have an opportunity today to build on commonality across political spectrums and to call upon the talents, abilities, and skills that may be contributed to the betterment of our city throughout all of West Covina. My deepest gratitude today to my mom and dad, Orlando and Linda Kanto's, whose high expectations of me as a person with a disability has led to this very moment. Mom and dad, and my sister Jennifer, and my nieces Madely and Malaya, thank you so very much for your presence today. I also wish to extend a hello to my boys Leo, Nick, and Steven, who are watching these proceedings from Virginia. I also wish to take this opportunity to thank Steve Hurford, my treasurer, and who is also the longest-serving member of the city council here throughout the, the history of the city of West Covina. Also present here is Mayor and former city councilman Mike Toohey and Mayor and City, former city councilman Lloyd Johnson. Appreciate you for all being here as well. And in addition to all those who are elected and appointed officials at all levels, I wish to extend my deepest appreciation to all of you for all of your service. And tonight, as we look ahead, we think about the fundamental importance of building new bridges with one another. The campaign was hard, and the people have spoken, and with the voice of the people, we all come together from every background to unite behind the common cause of making West Covina the best place in which to live, work, learn, and play. Tonight, we find ourselves nearing the end of the year, which itself is the eve of our 100th anniversary since our founding. We have come a long way since the days of Benjamin Franklin Maxson Jr., where that one individual who started the Articles of Incorporation to establish the city of West Covina was our first mayor. There were roughly 500 residents who came together to establish this city, and since then, we have swelled to more than 109,000 to 115,000. That means that through all of our history, we have made our lives here, we have made our homes here, and together, we will dedicate ourselves in the spirit of positive energy and in building camaraderie to make this city better by doing everything within our power to build those bridges that have divided us, and also to find ways to make sure to do everything within our ability to contribute in every way. My gratitude to all of you for this opportunity to be of service, and soon, we are to get to work. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Though, even though I ran unopposed, I still appreciate those who took the time to pencil and ballot me in. Um, there are over thousands of people who voted, so I wanted to thank our residents. Um, though I represent District Two, I represent the whole West Covina, so I'm here for every one of the residents. Feel free to email me anytime. But I just want to say a big congratulations to Oli. Um, I know he's the first blind person of West Covina, but he, though he can't see with his eyes, he sees with his heart, and that means a lot. Uh, he's a very intelligent, well-spoken gentleman, and I'm very excited to work with you, and a big congratulations to being our council colleague, and we look forward to, uh, many beautiful things, and just look forward to all your work. Thank you.
Councilman Wu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, and really quick, okay, I, I cannot forget. I have to thank, because last night I forgot, okay, I have to sleep in a garage for a couple of years, so I want to thank my wife, okay. Thank you so much, Helen, for your endurance for this, I don't know how many years, okay, uh, seven years, okay, and, uh, when I want to run, you say I'm crazy, okay, and, uh, I cannot believe it, okay. This is my third time sitting over here and swearing, so, but thank you for you taking all the beating, okay, of not fail to you, but, but sometimes we just have to take very hard way to help our city and how, help our community. So, thank you, um, my wife, my, together for how long, since 1987 here now, but thank you so much for you. Sometimes you have to sacrifice with, with my very busy schedule, okay, and I want to thank my son, Ma, uh, Hell, uh, Justin, sorry, I forgot your name, okay, Justin. I changed your diaper not too long ago, okay. Okay, Justin, thank you so much, and Megan, uh, she's here, I work at, uh, other city, okay, and, um, so she just cannot come, and my adopt kid, okay, and, um, okay, uh, I have to say this, she's a one great kid I have, okay, and, uh, Stephanie, and helping me since, uh, 2015, uh, till today, okay, and, uh, Jake, my another adopt son, okay, he helping me, both of them helping me big time since 2015, and, uh, with everything helping me and helping the company and helping the city, and a newly member, I just have baby, that, that's Selena, thank you so much, they join the family. But I want to thank, okay, and the family and the supporter, but most important thing, I want to send all the, thank all the voter, uh, to vote for me again, okay. I know sometimes I do things very straightforward, but, uh, sometimes you just have to do the way, but I want to thank the voter, give me another chance to serve. But most important thing is this, okay, with this, uh, four years, I want to finish who, while we start, we want to make sure what I promised to be a proud city. I think this is how we want, a safe, a beautiful, and proud city for our community, and this is our commitment, uh, to make this thing happen. Last, I want to say one thing is this, this is a miracle, it's only happened to the great city of West Covina, that you can elect three times. I don't know I can beat this. Our mayor Steve Hurford, okay, with his record, hopefully I can do, no, no, I'm not going to, I'm crazy. That's way too long, okay, and, uh, so, so three times, I don't know, will be four times a chance, okay, but maybe not, okay, but I want to say, uh, as an Asian immigrant can be elected three times in a great city of West Covina, they don't see who I am, they see my heart, they see my hard work, okay, and that they want to give me a chance to serve. So telling the people, no matter who you are, put your mind to it, you have a chance for people to recognize you, and same thing, to have our newly-elect, our Mr. Kanto's, okay, he has a chance with his ability, and then people will vote for him. This only happened in West Covina. I don't see anyhow the city will do this thing, because what? Because a voter really appreciate we coming out, okay, and to, to try to serve our city. So congratulations, okay, Oli, you're a, a great asset to the city, but I want to say something this, I think I can tell in our future meeting will be very, very long. I find out they have a three guy who will talk forever, okay, and, uh, of course, the drama between myself and Mr. Tabai Tabai, and then we have a new, join the new character, there's, uh, Oli Kanto, and he can speak great, he speak like a congressman, but, but I think this is a good, good, this is a very, very good, okay, and, uh, okay, team, that we will work together and to improve our city, but thank you so much.
I know, talking about family, family is the most precious and most important thing. That's why, uh, former Mayor Castellano is going to focus on his family, but yes, I wanted to thank my family as well. They do put a lot of sacrifice, and thank you for being there. Without them, I'm unable to give to the community, so they have a lot of factor with this as well, to my kids and, and to my husband, so thank you so much for everything.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Diaz. Uh, before I forget, I'd like to thank my family. My, my, uh, wife, Selena, my son Anthony, uh, my niece Tatiana, my nephew Josiah, who I think fell asleep. Uh, Uncle Tony's stories, and, uh, my sister-in-law Lorna, uh, thank you, uh, without, without family, uh, it would be impossible to serve, um, lots of sacrifices, but, um, we do it because we really want to make the best of our community, uh, and so I really appreciate you. To Councilman Wu, uh, congratulations on being reelected. Uh, again, I, I think Senator Rubio said you bring a great energy to the city, to every event, uh, and even though we have our disagreements, uh, I, I think we, we both come with a, with a fire, and, and we just want to see certain things, uh, for the best of our community. To Councilwoman Lopez Viado, uh, it's, uh, again, it'll be another wonderful, uh, at least two years, and, and hopefully longer, that we can serve together. Uh, again, you, the, the knowledge you bring, uh, to so many things, uh, you know, just, just all of our events, I think, become a, a little bit better because you bring, uh, just so much background on how to do things and make the community better, and, uh, I just, uh, have really enjoyed serving, and, and I'm going to really look forward to these next two years together. And Councilman Kanto's, uh, again, I really, uh, the, the energy, the, the spirit that you do bring, uh, our talk together, uh, once you had gotten elected, and, and just, uh, to know the, the love you have for your, for your three sons, for your family, uh, and just already the work you're, you're putting into, to the city, right, the transparency you brought, the level of engagement with, with all the organizations, with all the residents, um, you are going to bring, uh, something to this council that, uh, is needed, and I look forward to serving with you. And to our new mayor, Mayor Diaz, uh, well, I want to give you the mic, and then, uh, I don't know if we're all going to say something about the mayor after, uh, but I will give it off to you. Thank you.
Well, I want to welcome our, um, newly-elected, um, Councilman Kanto's. Um, you're right, uh, he has so much passion, um, I know he loves the city, and I really enjoyed our talks and, um, our working together already, um, so welcome, I'm really happy about that. Leti Lopez Viado, I'm very happy that you, uh, are back on the dais, unchallenged. So welcome. And Councilman Wu. Um, I'm really happy that we're all here together, we're going to work together, we have a lot of hard work, and, um, at the end of, after I get sworn in, then I have my little speech I will say, and I will talk to all everyone, so, thank you. So now I'm going to go down.
Mayor, through the chair, it is now time for the appointment of the mayor and mayor pro tem for the upcoming year. The city council conducts its annual reorganization after the city council confirms the official result, results of the general municipal election during election years. The municipal code outlines the mayoral succession process, process, which is determined by the length of the current the length of the current term of incumbency. Following the November 2022 election, the order of succession is as follows. Rosario Diaz, mayor, Brian Tabatabay, mayor pro tem, Tony Wu, council member, Leti Lopez Viado, council member, Ollie Cantos, council member. Do we have any opposition? Hearing no opposition, we will now proceed, proceed with the mayor's oath of office. Mayor Protem, if you'll come to the front, Charlie Hadamio, if you'll please come to the front, along with Monique.
I, Rosario Diaz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties that I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, it works. Yes, thank you once again for allowing me to say a few words, and thank you for the privilege of getting to know you these last few years. I know that there's a lot of differences of opinion, but one thing is, is clear, and that is that you're breaking barriers today. You are the first, you know, Latina mayor of the city, and I want to also commend Leti, who was, let's give her a big round of applause. And I want to look back to Leti Lopez Viado, who was the first female mayor, if I'm not mistaken. Was there someone before you? Oh, that's right, Shelley, my apologies. So we really want to just say that I want to commend this council. I was sitting back there, and if you notice the council today, you couldn't be more diverse and representative of your community, so I was just at awe, because I represent 16 cities, and this is the most diverse that I do have, and that's just a testament to your community and the willingness to, to accept differences of opinion and differences in backgrounds and, and nationality. So I want to just get back to our mayor here, who, who also is now, you know, making history for your city, so I do appreciate the work that you do, and, and she'll tell you that. I also see her everywhere, because she's in every community event that I go to, and that's often every day, in the daytime, at night, and that's, again, the personal commitment that comes with this job, and she's willing to do it, and I think anyone that's willing to put their personal time deserves the credit, so congratulations, Mayor, and I look forward to working with you and, and doing a lot of work for your city together. Thank you. Big round of applause to our mayor here. Thank you.
wanted to congratulate our new mayor, Ms. Rosario Diaz, and I know that with her and our Filipino, the whole Filipino community will be really be working with her so that we can make West Covina. You know, for me, I have, I have been here in West Covina from the Philippines since 1983, never moved, because I love the city of West Covina, okay, so we want to present you this certificate.
Thank you.
We wanted to say mah buhay, and Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to everybody. Good night, thank you.
Mayor, I, Mayor, I have a few more certificates that I would like to present to you here. We have a certificate of congressional recognition presented to Rosario Diaz from U.S. Congresswoman Grace Napolitano. Mayor, we have a certificate from Senator Josh Newman presented to Rosario Diaz, mayor of West Covina, and we have a certificate for Rosario Diaz, mayor for the city of West Covina, from Assemblywoman Blanco Rubio's office. Congratulations.
God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above, from the prairies to the mountains or the oceans wide with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. Bless West Covina, town that I love. Education, destination, start a business, raise a family, own a home. Kids and seniors, friends and neighbors, hundred years now going strong. Bless West Covina, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we have any comments by the council members, we'll start with Leti Lopez Viado, and we'll go this way.
Want to say congratulations to our new mayor. Lovely to have you here, and we look forward to your leadership and all the things that you can do and bring to the table, and we look forward to the next year, and you're part of the 100th year, so that's pretty amazing, and we look forward to all the things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, congratulations, Mayor Diaz, like Councilwoman Lopez Viado said, to think that on the 100th year anniversary, we would have Latina mayor, I don't think the founders could have imagined it, but here we are, and it just shows the growth and evolution of the city. We look forward, you, you've already represented the city, and we look forward to your leadership going forward.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mayor Diaz, okay, and I think you will, you will be a great referee, okay? To stop the fight between, yeah, Mr. Tabai Tabai and Mr. Wu, okay, so we're going to have a great debate, okay, as I say, you are law enforcement, you will enforce the law, okay? Make sure our debate won't go out of hand, okay, but thank you so much for your willing to serve, and I look forward for your future endeavors, okay, and help to host a meeting and represent us, and I know next year will be the 100 years of the city, and that you will represent us great, and to make sure we have all the community event, and you will be there, represent us, and host the meeting, and then, thank you so much for you willing to serve the city and willing to be a referee. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ollie.
Madam Mayor, heartiest congratulations to you. With you being our chief executive, this is also an opportunity for you to unite all of us in a spirit of love and camaraderie and support, and especially with all of those efforts and that energy dedicated to those purposes, I think that it's going to be a magnificent year. Heartiest congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll say a few words here. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here. It is my honor and privilege to be sworn in as the Centennial Mayor of West Covina. This marks my 36th year in public service, and I am humbled by your trust and confidence in me. Thank you to my awesome friends, who are always there, standing to support me. It is my pleasure to have my family members present for this historical occasion. Joining me tonight is my mother, Rosario, my lovely daughter, Monique Hadamio, and her boyfriend, Drew, and my son, Charlie, and his lovely daughter, I mean, his lovely wife, Tina, and my beautiful granddaughter, Amina Riley. Amina, Grandma's the mayor now. Moving into the next 100 years, we have a lot of important work to do. This council is poised to do great things for the city, for the people of the city, and I am very excited to be a part of that. Of course, I do realize you can't please all the people all of the time, so to my critics, all I can say is, well, bless your heart. As your mayor, I pledge to lead this jewel of the San Gabriel Valley into the centennial year with dedication, commitment, and old-fashioned hard work. To paraphrase President Kennedy, ask not what West Covina can do for you, ask what you can do for West Covina. Many thanks to our city manager, David Carmoni, and his staff, and much gratitude to my city council colleagues as well for their continued support. To Councilwoman Leti Lopez Viado, who is returning to the dais again, unchallenged, for another four years, representing District 2, good job, and congratulations. Congratulations are also in order to Councilman Tony Wu on his dramatic victory in District 5. Thank you for your leadership and for your vision for West Covina. And a big congratulation goes out to our newly elected District 4 Councilman, Ollie I look forward, I look forward to working with you very much. Welcome. Thank you all for your service. I'd also like to credit all the former candidates who ran for city council. You are democracy in action, and I admire and commend each one of you for your willingness to serve the community. And most importantly, thank you, God, for your amazing grace and for your infinite blessings in my life. Her clothing is strength and dignity, and she laughs without fear of the future. Proverbs 31:25. May God continue to richly bless America and the city of West Covina. We are all so blessed. I pray for his guidance, for his wisdom over the next 12 months. I'm asking for your prayers. I couldn't close my remarks without thanking my husband, Bill, for his unwavering support in the eye of the storm. It means a lot to me. And finally, a heartfelt thank you goes out to the people of West Covina for your confidence in me and for loving the city as much as I do. Now let us move forward together into the next century and beyond. Thank you. Okay, let's see, where do we go now? Okay, do we have any council member requests? Reports, reports. Is that all?
Through the chair, I believe we have one.
Okay.
Mr. Cantos.
Madam Mayor, as my first act on this council, I wish to make you aware that I have submitted a report on my activities during the transition. It is being submitted for the record and should be online within the next two days, and it has also gone out on social media, reporting on all of the engagements, all of the meetings, and everything that I have worked through this point in order to help build momentum and to move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Leti?
I just wanted to say thank you, a shout out to Officer Sam Ling for putting on the Shop with a Cop event, was just a wonderful event to see all the needy families, all the police officers shopping with them and filling their carts with what they, with their hearts desired, so thank you to the POA, Officer Sam Ling and the POA. Also, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy holidays and a Happy New Year, and we will resume and see everyone next year, so enjoy your holidays. Thank you.
Okay, are there any council requests? Okay, are there any council requests? None, okay. Any other comments? Nothing? Okay, well, this concludes our meeting. And our, right, we're going to do a motion right now. So the next scheduled meeting is for January the 17th of 2023. It says 2022 here. And is there anyone who'd like to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Great. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy and Safe New Year. And this meeting is adjourned.
And we have cake, cake and coffee in the.
I'm sorry, we have cake and coffee in the, what is it?
Reception.
Reception room. Thank you.